The April 4th, 2016 meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask that you please give this council the wisdom and the courage to make the necessary decisions to lead this county forward. We also ask that you look over our brave men and women serving overseas. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, I believe we have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask Rachel Hoban to come forward, please, to the front podium. I just want to let everybody know, for the past few months, I've actually had an intern at our office. Rachel is a senior at Arundel High School, and she's helped with constituent services with Dave Helmicki, my legislative aide, from handling phone calls to dealing with emails, doing research, pretty much a little bit of everything. What a lot of people don't know is Rachel's also an all-star swimmer. And where are you going to be attending college? You want to tell everyone?
I'm at a Towson University.
Towson University. Let's give her a round of applause for that. And as a former teacher, I think it's important to recognize, obviously, her, and I also want to recognize her family. If you would just wave. First of all, thank you for allowing me to let her do that. You guys give us a round of applause for, obviously, raising such a fine young woman. But I want to present to you, Rachel, and thank you for all your help, this certificate. I just want to read appreciation of your service to the Anaronda County Council, particularly District 4, and wishing you success in your future. And the county council thanks you for your contribution to the citizens of our county, and thank you so much for all your help.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda? We ask you, please, hold your remarks to two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Tonight, I'm back again about the septic system. I was here at the last meeting. I reported to you that I was before the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals had issued a subpoena to the Health Department for the records of the property that is several doors away from me because I needed to see the documents for the septic system. The employee of Anaronda County appeared, and while he was there to testify, he was also there to produce documents, and he did not produce the documents. But about 6:30 PM, the evening of the last meeting, I spoke with one of the other employees from the Health Department, who assured me I would get those documents right away, because after all, there aren't that many documents in the file. I have not received those documents yet. I am really upset. You know, these are documents that are public records related to the installation of the septic tank, or, excuse me, septic system, and of course, you know my concern as the dry well, which is why I'm here with two rolls of toilet paper tonight. Because not only is the one neighbor, you know, encroaching on my property, but he's encroaching because the other neighbor has his dry well only four and a half, four to five feet from the property line of this neighbor. Now, what can I do? I can't do much. I depend on you to help me and to supervise the county. So, of course, what you do, you read the law. And it's pretty boring to read the law about plumbing, septic, you know, dry wells. This is not your fun reading. But I found a really important document, or a statute, that says, "The Health Department shall look at properties within 100 feet." That means the Health Department is required, and they didn't do it.
Please summarize.
So I am asking you, frankly, to lean upon the Health Department, you know, to say, "Look, you guys have to do your jobs. This guy cannot leave the septic, you know, the new septic," or, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
The guy who's doing the upgrading can't leave it where he is. I will leave you with your toilet paper because I borrowed it from...
Is there any item, any council member, would like to place on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like the intro, Bill Number 2816, and I guess Ms. Jones will read off the title.
Bill 2816, an ordinance concerning zoning, alcoholic beverage uses.
Great. Thank you. May I have a motion to partial, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or amendment constitutes the reading of the whole...
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 21st, 2016.
The meeting was called order by Chairman Derek Fink at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by the Reverend Dr. Karen Johnson and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes, March 21st, 2016. It's approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 2516, an ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, right-of-entry, Health Department. Bill 2616, an ordinance concerning Board of Appeals, Administrative Hearing Officer, subdivision and development, and zoning notice requirements. Bill 2716, an ordinance concerning personnel, classified service, overtime pay, police communications operator for.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 616 through 816 and 1016 through 1216? And Bill Number 716, 816, and 2016 out of order?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 618.
No, can I, I need to call the roll to suspend the rules.
Call the roll.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grossow.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolutions 616, 716, 816, 1016, 1116, and 1216, and Bill Number 1716 and 1816 and 2016 out of order passes.
Great. Please read the title of Resolution 616.
Resolution proposing an amendment to the chart, oh, excuse me, a resolution entitled Charter Amendment Compilation of Laws. Would you hear my toilet paper?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. Here with me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer. Resolution 616 is a charter amendment designed to eliminate an unnecessary portion of the charter that requires recodification of the code every 10 years. This section of the charter created, was created when the code was only available on paper, and the project has become cumbersome, and that's why it was only updated every 10 years. We obviously now update our code much more often than that, multiple times a year. In addition, you should have a memo from Ms. Gray before you, outlining her request to the administration to introduce this resolution. We had discussions several months back with the Office of Law and your office on this charter amendment, so we would ask your favorable support of this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for the administration from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Resolution 616? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 616.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Compilation of Laws.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grossow.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 616 is passed.
Please read the resolution of 716, title of...
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Effective Date of Ordinances Appropriations.
Great. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, as well as John Hammond from the budget officer here with me. As we discussed at the work session several weeks back, Resolution 716 is a charter amendment designed to make the county run more efficiently by making budget transfer legislation take effect immediately, rather than 45 days after a bill is signed into law. This is our attempt to address the, or, excuse me, to reduce the need for the use of emergency bills that are not actually emergencies through budget transfer bills coming before the council. This will also make things flow more smoothly through county operations between the budget office and the finance office and the various departments in county government. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Great. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Resolution 716? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 716.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Effective Date of Ordinances Appropriations.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perutka.
We'd just like to thank Mr. Hammond and Ms. Blair and others, Mr. Schu and Mr. Marzick, for their work on this. I think it's an important thing to do. It seems, might seem minor, but I think it's important to distinguish between emergencies and regular accounting activities that are not really emergencies. So I think we've got it right, and I appreciate their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perutka. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grossow.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 716 is passed.
Please read the title of Resolution 816.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Purchasing Contract Limits.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. Here with me at the table, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, Christine Romans from Central Services, Mark Hartzell, Chief Administrative Officer. As we discussed pretty extensively at the work session as well, Resolution 816 increases the minimum from $25,000 to $100,000 that the county must have competitive bids for county procurements. This will afford us the opportunity to operate more efficiently in the procurement, managing our small procurements. We're hoping that we can have a competitive process while allowing for fair bidding and then, as well, an efficient use of our resources through this procurement process. I think you may remember, as we discussed at the work session, that 60% of these procurements would be covered by moving to $100,000 in that limit. And again, this is just enabling legislation, or, excuse me, enabling language in the charter that we would have to follow up with an actual ordinance at a later time if the voters were to approve this on the ballot come November. We walked through some of the examples of the Office of Information Technology to try to illustrate this with the council at the work session, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you have on the process itself or this resolution.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Romans, so, I know we kind of went over this at the work session, but I just want to, for clarification purposes. So, right now, the number is 25,000. So, above 25,000, we have to send out an RFP, and someone, our responding companies or vendors respond to the county, and those bids are sealed, sealed bids. So we don't know what the bid is, and they don't know what the bids are until we get those and open them up. Is that correct?
Generally correct, exactly. Over 25,000, we do an RFP or an IFB. And again, those are, the bids are, or the proposals are sealed until they're opened, and it's usually low price or low bid for the IFBs, but for proposals, we are looking for best value.
And so, below the $25,000 threshold, there's not a sealed bid. So theoretically, if, let's say I was, worked in purchasing for you, probably would, you'd probably fire me, but...
You'd have a great time.
Let's say I worked in purchasing for you, and I was soliciting bids for new computers, because that's IT keeps, the thing that keeps being bantered about as being the issue. And so, I issued a bid because it's below 25,000. I currently don't, based on our internal policies, I don't have to broadcast that out to any more than three potential vendors.
So, you don't have to. However, we always try to get competition. The best way to do that is to reach as many vendors as possible.
But we don't have to. There's no mandate to do...
Correct.
How many, what's the mandate to do? Just one?
No.
Like, if somebody...
We must attempt to get three.
And is it, does it happen where you don't get three?
Rarely, very rarely. And I will say that the vast majority of the time, we're using the state's website called eMaryland Marketplace.
Why wouldn't you use that all of the time?
There are times where a, an agency has already gone and gotten three quotes, so we don't have to go the extra step. And if we're trying to move kind of quickly on something, and we've got the three quotes, we've got a low bid, and remember, when people are emailing or calling us back or writing us with their written quote, they don't know what somebody else is bidding in that situation.
They, well, they don't, I mean, they might not know, but the...
They wouldn't know from us.
The opportunity does present itself that because it's not a sealed bid, that, and I'm not trying to disparage anyone in purchasing, but if there, if there was a bid that came across, and I was an agent and saw that it was 25,000, or 24,999, and somebody else called and said, you know, "Hey, you know, where's the number at," or whatever, there's some way to get, it's not sealed, though.
It's not sealed, but what you're suggesting is highly unethical, and we would never do that.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying it's possible, because the sealed bid process completely prevents that from happening, but the, a process where there's not a sealed bid, that could theoretically happen.
Could theoretically happen.
Yeah. But with a sealed bid, it would be highly unlikely.
There would be disciplines for that.
I'm sorry?
I mean, that's unacceptable behavior.
No, I understand.
Again, I'm not trying to disparage anybody.
I'm just saying theoretically, that could, that scenario could happen, where if it was a sealed bid, it doesn't happen, because the three bids are coming in and they're sealed, nobody, and then all of a sudden, they're opened at the same time with lots of people in the room.
Right. Over 25,000, that's how the process works.
Right. So, the point of this, then, is to ask us to move that $25,000 threshold to 100,000 to impact 60% of the purchases that you all are processing.
That are, that represent a very small dollar value, yes, for the county, absolutely.
Well, I don't know. Some people would argue that that's a large dollar value.
Well, it's, you know, when you're talking about 10% of the value and 60% of the work, 10% of the value is to us...
No, I know, but I'm saying, I guess, from a citizen's perspective, if you're looking at the number of dollars that a county government's spending, maybe in relation to our budget, it might be a small number of dollars.
But to the average person, I agree.
But it's a lot, I mean, it's a lot of money we're talking about. That could be issued.
We're just trying to administer the process more efficiently. That's the point.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Romans, 60%. How many people are in procurement?
I believe I have 22 staff.
22 that are dedicated to procurement. And then, that 10% number, you happen to know roundabout how much that is? Does the auditor know?
Dollar value.
Just off the top of your head?
Not good with numbers. Like, 24 million is the 10%?
Okay. I'm sorry?
235 million is the...
13 million in total spend. It's contract spend.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smith?
So, of that 23 million-ish, or, what's the, what's the, what's the 66% number?
So, $23 million represents purchases between 25,000 and 100,000. 24 million, yeah.
And right now, it's what?
Right now, it's at 25,000 is the limit, and if we raise the limit to 100,000...
No, no, I'm saying, on the total price, so right now, you're at 6 million? Anything, what's less than 25% for 25,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Is it 6.9 million the figure that I'm showing here on this, on this sheet of paper?
So it's 24 million? Isn't that the question I asked?
No, no, I'm asking about the total amount of procurement...
He's asking under 25,000.
For under 25,000, the total dollar amount, it's roughly 6.9 million, if I'm looking at this sheet correctly? That's the one you sent us in the email?
Again, that does not have less than 25,000 on it. It has anything between 25,000 and...
Oh, it does, okay.
Yep.
Do you have a ball figure of less than 25,000?
I don't. Unfortunately, the county's financial systems make it difficult to pull that data out, and as well as the P-card transactions, and remember, some, up to $5,000 purchases can be done with, and again, this, this resolution doesn't affect anything under 25,000, so...
Well, I guess if the total is 235, if we subtract 211, 9.5, 7.6, 9.8, that gives us, pretty much everything else is under 25,000, if we do the opposite.
235 million represents the value of purchases from 25,000 all the way on up, and I can think in 2015, there was one purchase that was $30 million, so. So again, the 235 million in that chart only represents 25,000 and above.
Okay. So essentially, we're going to be increasing the amount that is not closed bid by roughly 24 million. So the standard process right now, when, so by law, everything over 25,000K, you must have the closed bidding process?
Correct. Either proposal or invitation for bids.
So if we approve it to 100,000, then we're saying everything up to 100,000 by law, or everything over 100,000 by law is, requires a close, and everything, obviously, under that, it does not?
Does not require. However, we still have a requirement for competition, which is the process that I was just describing, the request for quotes, where we go out and try to find as many quotes as we can, use eMaryland Marketplace.
Is that a county policy, or one that's implemented by whoever the director...
The procurement code requires a minimum of three bids.
Okay.
And that's what we go for right now, for anything under 25,000. And this, the resolution would change that, if the voters approve, to 100,000.
Check. Well, if the vote was approved, then it still has to come back to the...
Then answer back to, exactly.
To the council, okay.
Sorry. One more step, an important one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Romans, how long does a procurement, yeah, the procurement process last? Today, you decide that we want, whatever, we want new chairs for the Arundel Center.
New chairs for the Arundel Center could take anywhere from a couple of weeks. If we have a blanket contract, we would have the vendor come in, meet with you, show you some chairs, see what you like. Could probably get those in one, two, maybe three weeks. If we didn't have a blanket contract, and you didn't know what you wanted, and it, let's say you're going to buy new chairs for everybody, it's going to be over 25,000, that could take us a couple of weeks to write the specs, get the specifications together, advertise it for a set period of time, let the vendors ask questions, receive the bids, open them, make sure that the bidders are responsive and responsible, and then award the contract. That could take months.
So, things over 25,000 can take months?
And, and to use a bigger example, when we're doing something that's very large, millions of dollars, that's capital, that's several months, two years, to be able to do that process. But there are reasons for that.
Sure. And then, when do we set 25,000? When was that set?
2004, right, Lori? I think it was 2004.
2004. And what was the number before, then? Do you know?
It was 10, I believe.
So we went from 10 to 25. And, I had one more question. I'm going to let Mr. Walker go, I think.
Ms. Romans, you, you mentioned that, you mentioned the competition again, but it's still, to me, it doesn't sound exactly clear, because it sounds like you said the code required three, but that certain situations, you can't get three, or that, but let me ask you this. So let's say I want to be a vendor to sell Mr. Napolitano computers, but I don't know Mr. Napolitano, and I don't know anybody in purchasing. How would I find out if, if Mr. Napolitano makes requests for five or 10 computers? How would I know without you mandating that you're on eMaryland Marketplace, which you're not, which indicates, sometimes you have, sometimes you're on it, sometimes you're not? It doesn't sound like there's any public transparency. So if I'm a vendor, there ought to be someplace I can go reliably and look at every single item that's going to be put out there for bids, so that I have an opportunity to bid on it.
Yeah.
And yet, that doesn't seem like that's the case right now. It seems like it's sort of like, well, it's our, we'd like to get three, but if we don't, then we just settle for one or two. Sometimes we use eMaryland Marketplace, but sometimes we don't. It doesn't sound like there's any consistent sort of policy for making sure that vendors, that there's a transparent process, that everybody knows what's going to happen every single time there's a bid that goes out, and you're asking us to take this from 25 to 100, without any of those sort of protections, if you will, in place.
All right. So first, I apologize if I've given you the sense that it, there are, that we're not doing it the majority of the time. The problem I have is there are cases occasionally, but I would tell you that the vast majority of the time, 75, 85, 90% of the time, we use eMaryland Marketplace. We do not profess to know that we know every vendor who could potentially meet our need at a fair, low price in order to quickly get what Mr. Napolitano, whatever he's looking for.
But why wouldn't it be 100%? Like, why wouldn't we set a policy to say, regardless of what it is that we're, if we're selling pens or pencils or iPhones, we would want to get the best possible price, so we should send it out far and wide and make sure that it's public, so that if any vendor, no matter who they are, where they're at in the world, could go to a website, which seems pretty easy, to go on a website to look and see, "Okay, Anaronda County's going to buy $26,000 worth of iPhones tomorrow, and I'd like to bid on that."
There are just times where we have gotten three quotes, because we, the Recreation and Parks, or DPW, or Central Services themselves, we've gotten the three quotes already, we know that these are good prices, we are prepared to award a contract. And if there is a requirement to 100% of the time, without fail, go through eMaryland Marketplace, that can cause us an inefficiency, where we have to stop and wait and get those additional vendors to potentially bid for us. I'm not saying that it would, I mean, I actually understand you're saying that competition at all costs, but I'm saying we are awarding on the basis of three quotes. That is competition. It's not as wide as it sounds like you would like, but I will tell you again, the vast majority of the time...
Why wouldn't we put it on, like, our website? Couldn't we do that?
We do that for, for anything over 25,000. We could certainly look into doing it for something under that, putting it on our website. eMaryland Marketplace, as you know, vendors register there for the types of things that they're interested in selling, and they get email notifications when something is added.
I know it very well.
Yes.
I do it in my other job.
Yeah.
The, the other question I have for you is, why the 100,000? I mean, you, the administration submitted a chart to us, it had two, I think, maybe two jurisdictions that were at 100. One was DC.
Montgomery County.[1580.23] Montgomery County.
And one was Montgomery County, I think. But there were a whole bunch of other jurisdictions in the state that were not on that list. Have you had since then the opportunity to fill in all those other counties, all those other jurisdictions?
No, we haven't. However, we, I will say that in deciding where to start with this resolution, we recognize that the, some of these jurisdictions are on the more progressive side. And we recognize that the time it takes to conduct a procurement under the current system is, it takes a long time. And being able to be more efficient with a vast majority of our purchases, that's what we're going for. We're not necessarily saying we want to be like Manassas, or Falls Church, or DC, or Fairfax, but if this chart does show you, we wouldn't be the first, we wouldn't be alone, we wouldn't necessarily even be an outlier. Would we be towards the front of the pack? Towards the front, yes, I would agree with that. But that doesn't take away from the point, which is we're trying to make the process more efficient.
Okay. What's the purpose, answer this, this last, this last question for me. What in your mind is the purpose of the threshold? I mean, why even set one? Right? If three bids is sufficient, and we feel like we have a good purchasing department that's doing their job, then why set it at 100,000? Why not 1 million?
I think the man to my left would probably say, you know, yes, absolutely. I say that as, as the value of a purchase or procurement goes up, I think that the risk goes up as well, and that's why there's a more involved process, to make sure that we're not only getting a good value, but we're getting exactly what we're asking for.
And I think the risk is what concerns, at least me, I don't mean, I can't speak for anybody else up here, but for me, that is the, I guess that is the point that I'm concerned about, and you're asking us to, well, it's three times what, to raise it by three times what it is currently.
Can I add a comment?
I just struggle with the fact that it's three times that amount.
I'd like to add a comment, if you don't mind. Part of the reason on the 100K is because that's where the bend in the knee is, the curve. If you look at the spend profile of what we do as a county, especially in telecom, I haven't done it across the county, you'll see that there are many, many, many small purchases, which I would call 100K small purchases. Then there's a big space between the small purchases and the large purchases. So it's not like there's an even spread of distribution of bids. So you see a whole bunch right at 100, then there's a space, and then they get into the many hundreds or millions.
What's the purpose in your mind?
In my mind?
Yeah. So if you're, if, I mean, Ms. Romans runs the department, but according to her, you'd like it to see higher, so why?
No, I'm very happy with 100K. We brought that number to her. I think her comment is more, just she knows how much I enjoy moving more quickly than slow. If you look, I really think we're focused on the wrong end of the telescope here.
I don't understand, it's not a --
Let me, if I may.
You guys can just add your name. Mr. Napolitano, can you add your name for the record? Ms. Hartzell.
Sure.
Just so we have it on the record.
My name is Rick Napolitano. I'm with the OIT.
Thanks.
Dan Mark Hartzell, CIO.
Thank you.
Councilman Walker, the reason for the $100,000 threshold is that when we looked at the, when we looked at the procurement process in its entirety, one of the things we wanted to do was just make it more efficient. But when, but if you actually take a look at the data, and I believe this, you gentlemen, or everybody in the council got a copy of this, but the conclusion is, we're spending 75% of our time on activities which represent less than 11% of our overall spend. What we really want to do is we want to reverse that. And so what we should be looking at doing is spending the majority of our time on 90% of our spend. And so, to go back to Mr. Napolitano's comment, the $100,000 really addresses that issue. That's a first step in us becoming much more efficient in how the people in the procurement area are spending their time. The second phase to this will ultimately be the technology that we put in place to support that. So that's really what drives it.
Ms. Romans, or Mr. Marzick, I guess, moving forward, assuming this, this passes, something passes, and the bill comes back down to us to actually set that number, we can add some parameters, can't we? We can require the Maryland website, we can require Anarundel County's website, we can require five bids. We'll be able to write that into code, right?
Yes.
With that next bill?
Right. And I think there's the opportunity, right, that this is obviously bringing this issue to the council, and it's something we want to work with you all on to, you know, try to reform this system to make it more efficient. And I think there could be other suggestions coming from the study that Mr. Hartzell was referencing, and other opportunities that Ms. Romans, who's obviously new to the position as head of the Central Services, can bring to the table as well, from what she's seen.
Sure. And you're not, ultimately, you're not asking us. I mean, this, this goes to the voters. At the end of the day, we're just allowing it to go to the voters to say, yeah, 100,000's fine, or absolutely not, we're going to keep it at 25.
Right. And then obviously, it has to come back to you all to set that number.
Only if the voters allow for it.
If the voters allow for it, correct.
Ms. Dickinson.
I wanted to clarify something that was said earlier. I think Councilman Smith said something about this impacting $24 million of spending. In the blue letter, I provided on the top of page three, this table that we got from Central Services, and the shaded areas are the only ones that are impacted by this change. Those are the ones between 25 and 100,000 that use the IFB or the RFP process. I did a quick rounded addition here, and came up with 6.8 million of our spending will be impacted by this change. Because the other ones that are in that $24 million number are using sole source, or these other methods that I listed at the bottom of page two, different types of contracts that are bid in different ways.
So this is only affecting, you said, 25 million?
Six million.
6.8 million.
So what she's referring to is there's the total population of everything that's spent in that category of 20, 25 to 100,000. There are a lot of purchases that are done with different procurement methods. Sole source procurements, emergency procurements, expedited procurements, a lot of those are reported to you all monthly. IFBs and RFPs are the two categories, or two types of procurement method, that require competition and require a formal process. The resolution that's in front of you largely only impacts those. You assume, if it's sole source today at 26,000, it's going to be sole source tomorrow, whether the limit is, you know, 100,000 or not. So that's why we focus on IFB and RFP more primarily. So Ms. Dickinson is correct, that the total population kind of affected by this resolution right now is valued at 6 million. If you recognize the total purchases, it is 26 or so. Does that help?
Yeah. Ms. Chair.
Ms. Smith.
Could there be a situation where a sole source competition is created down the road, where it no longer lends itself to be a sole sourcing mechanism?
A sole source is a very specific definition laid out in the code. There has to be only one source, or it has to be a situation where a vendor has exclusive rights to a specific geographic territory, or things like that. I don't know, I don't think this resolution will impact those kinds of things. What would impact that is more businesses locating here that do that kind of work.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 816? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 816.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Purchasing Contract Limits.
I do know we have a few amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment decreases the proposed minimum value of purchases and contracts requiring competitive bidding to 50,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, or Mr. Marzick?
It's my amendment. It's pretty self-explanatory. It lowers the number from 100,000 to 50,000.
Very good. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we would ask you to oppose this amendment. I mean, I see the next amendment is for 75 as well, but I think we feel comfortable with that $100,000 level. I think, as you've pointed out, Mr. Smith has pointed out, and we've discussed several times as well, is this resolution leaves it to the voters of the county to decide. We feel as if this is a solid number at 100,000, and we would let the voters make that decision if they're comfortable with going to 100,000. We then could come back to the council and work with the council on an ordinance to change this number from anywhere from 25,000 up to 100,000. So we would ask you to oppose this amendment.
Any discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Marzick referenced the amendment, I guess we'll discuss in a minute, but I do believe that the panel made a compelling case for why 25 is too low. I've had discussions with folks at the panel about this. I'm not, I'm not sure if 50,000 is the right number. I'm going to, I'm going to support this amendment, but my preference is for the amendment that comes past that. So that would, that would supersede this if it does, but I think, since this does increase it, I'll support this amendment. But stay tuned for the one that comes after it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Stay tuned. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Nay.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Three, four in the affirmative, three in the negative, amendment number one passes.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
This amendment changes the proposed maximum amount of the value of a contract not requiring competitive bidding from 100,000 to 75,000.
Move to adopt. Second. Clive some mic. Hold on, we got to turn some people on.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so you, I guess I, I guess I let a spoiler out before, but this is my amendment. And again, having had some, some discussions with the panel and some of my colleagues, I basically feel that 100,000 is, essentially, it's too big of a jump all at once. I know the, the chart that the administration handed around comparing us with some other jurisdictions, but I don't, I don't, I don't think that if we went to 100, we'd be in the middle, we'd be all the way up at the top. I also think that 100,000 is, for whatever reason, perceived as a much higher number. Our county median income, household income is 86, $87,000. So, I mean, it's a lot of money to people. And so I looked, I looked at the tables and the charts that the administration and the auditor have provided. I understand that 75,000 wouldn't get quite where you guys want to be, but it gets us further than 25, and further than 50, and this is a level that I'm comfortable with. So I'd ask folks who supported 50,000, if you want to meet in the middle between the admin and Mr. Walker's amendment. This, this may be, hopefully, a happy compromise, so I'd ask for your support on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also a co-sponsor on this amendment, and certainly when the bill comes forward, I also will support 75,000. I did talk with the administration, and I actually called some purchasing offices in other counties. And certainly, I think 50, you know, while it's there, hopefully, we pass 75, but at least this is moving the marker a little bit, because in all deference, 50,000 is really inflation, if you look at it in terms of double. But this would make it where at least moves it closer to what, what they're asking. And again, I want to go on the record right now, if this comes up in front of the council, we're asking for 75, we'll support 75. So I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
I'm guessing the administration supports this now?
Let's say I have an amendment that puts it at 100 again.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could offer an amendment to make it back to 100. I mean, our preference is for 100,000. I think we've been pretty clear on that.
With 100 being off the table now, so we either got 50, or nothing, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of our choices now.
Or 75.
Or 75. But if you oppose 75, it stays at 50.
Right. Well, we opposed 50, and it moved to 50, so I wouldn't guarantee that our word is going to influence the council on that. Obviously, 75,000 is a better position than 50,000, and would help to improve the system. Again, our preference is for the 100,000 level.
Very good. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number two is passed.
Thank you. Being this is a resolution, we can vote on it tonight. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 816.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Purchasing Contract Limits.
As amended, any other discussion on this? Please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution 816 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 1016.
Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 1016 as drafted offers Lawrence Yuvela and Michael Bostaris for the Ethics Commission. We are, however, offering amendments that I will address at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Resolution 1016? Seeing no movement, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read title Resolution 1016.
Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Marzick? I'm sorry. We have, we do have an amendment. Please read Amendment One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes Lawrence W. Yuvela from consideration for appointment to the Ethics Commission.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
A second? All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mr. Yuvela was recently confirmed by the State Senate to serve on the Board of the Anarundel County Community College. So we are removing his name from consideration, because he cannot serve on the Ethics Commission, but we would like to move forward with Mr. Bostaris to serve on the Ethics Commission. And Mr. Bostaris will actually be replacing Mr. Yuvela's position, which expires, his resignation will take effect April 30th, is my understanding.
Great. Second time before us. Is, any other discussion? Ms. Chair. Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This just brought up, I guess, a wonderment that I was having. This is the first time I can remember where we've struck out an appointment, and I understand that there's two in here, so we're striking out one, the other one will go forward.
Correct.
But I, this is probably a question from Ms. Tate. Is it, is it possible for either the administration or the council to strike out an appointment and replace them with someone, or is it only possible to strike it out in its entirety?
Well, in theory, if we had, if we had an amendment, yes, but we, we don't have an amendment, so we're going to proceed. It's my understanding that Mr. Bostaris has taken that seat, and someone else is staying on, as the way the code is written, that individual who's in there now will stay until someone's appointed to replace that person. So we're not down a member.
Okay.
That's what you're asking.
Well, I guess what I'm really asking is, if, if the administration had someone that was prepared to take, you know, to take the place of the applicant who is no longer being considered, would that still be a valid resolution?
Yes.
I mean, oh, you can do that? Okay. Okay.
I mean, resolutions of appointment don't require the same waiting period that, that, I mean, we have a, in our council rules, we have a seven-day period, where we, we let the resolution sit for seven days. However, it, there's an exception in there for resolutions of appointment, so we could, if there was someone to amend in, we could do that.
All right. That's always, Trumbauer, if I could just add?
Go ahead. Well, you go first.
I just want to say, the Ethics Commission is a little different. The, Lori Blair from the County Law Office, the, there are certain appointments that are made by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. There are others that the county council puts the name forward, they're then confirmed by the county, they're then confirmed by the county executive and come back to the county council. So both of these are county executive appointments. So if your question is, could you strike the second, could you put a different person in that you, of your choosing, the answer would be no.
Right. And I'm not at all saying that I wanted to do that.
The question was, if the county executive offered someone else.
Yeah.
Yes, if the county executive offered someone else, that would be, but you could not just substitute somebody for --
Gotcha. Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the reasoning behind this is, as Ms. Tate pointed out, is that there's a seven-member commission. If we went forward with the resolution without switching the spots, we would then only have six members on the commission, and the term ends April 30th. So we'll be bringing forward another resolution to replace that person whose term ends April 30th.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Resolution Requesting the County Executive Launch a Review of the Cluster Development Provisions in the Anarundel County Code.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this resolution came about for a number of different reasons. But essentially, there were some leaders in the community who were concerned about cluster development. I am an IT professional. I make no claims that I am an expert at anything that deals with the environment. That is Mr. Trumpauer's expertise. And so my response to these leaders was that I thought, you know, the thing that I could offer is probably us getting some valuable information on cluster development, how they have affected our community, or the county, I should say, since they have been permitted as a zoning preference or choice or. And so I reached out, I think I even spoke to Mr. Tom in the past as well, to try to start collecting data on, you know, what is cluster development? How does it impact the environment? Why was it implemented? And so I thought it was appropriate to bring about legislation, or at least ask the administration to perform a study on this type of development, to see what levels of impacts it has created on the environment since they have been designed, since their inception. And one of the other things is, I sort of offered up was that if during this fact-finding mission we find data points or information that is, indicates that it is a hindrance to the environment, well, certainly, maybe we should look at sort of postponing these types of developments if, in fact, the data shows that. I don't know if the data shows that. Obviously, they're going to be reviewing this if this passes. But I did ask the administration, and I'm offering up this letter to sort of, and asking for support from the council, to, you know, give me a hand in asking the administration on doing some research and getting legitimate data to show us whether or not cluster development is a benefit, or if it's a hindrance for the environment. And so Mr. Tom, I see he's at the table if he wanted to add anything. But that's essentially how and why I got to this, how this resolution came about.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Marzick. Mr. Tom.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. With me is Larry Tom from the Office of Planning and Zoning. We've had this discussion with Mr. Smith over the last few weeks. And as he knows, the Office of Planning and Zoning is currently conducting a review of cluster development. And we have legislation that we are working on to reform this portion of the code. And we hope to be bringing that to the council in the next few weeks or month. But I'll let Mr. Tom discuss more, as he's obviously the expert on this issue.
Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, for the record, I'm Larry Tom, planning and zoning officer. Just to echo a little bit of what Mr. Marzick has indicated, over the last six months or so, we've been working with several community leaders, particularly from the Broadneck Peninsula, to take a look at the issue of cluster subdivisions. We are aware that there have been some problems with some of the development that has occurred in that area of our county, specifically as it relates to infill lots of small size. We've been conscious of that. We've been working very closely with some of the community leadership, particularly through the Growth Action Network. And as Mr. Marzick has indicated, we are preparing legislation. It's in its final touches. And we hope to bring that forward within the next 30 days.
Thank you. So the study that's being asked for in this resolution, is it already completed? And now you're using that info to create this legislation? Or has this study not been done?
Well, the study, as Mr. Smith has indicated, may be timely. You know, I mean, we've looked at these issues as well. The reason why we're bringing legislation forward is because we recognize that the intent of cluster subdivisions has been established for, not only since 2005, when we did a recodification of the zoning code, but even prior to, with the old code, is not necessarily being met with some of the smaller infill development. So we are aware of that problem. Do we need to do a study beyond that? I'm not real sure. I think that a lot of the changes that we're advocating with the proposed legislation will address a lot of these same issues.
I think, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smith.
I think the resolution sort of lends itself to allow the council to sort of make a formal ask. So that, I'm not sure what data or what legislation you've been working on previously. But this specific legislation asks a specific question. And I think the intent of the resolution is to get information that may or may not be present in the ordinance that you may potentially propose in the future. This is going at a specific question. And I just wanted to make sure the data we gets back is sufficient to answer that specific question, regardless of the future legislation that may or may not come down. So.
Mr. Tom. The, how many, what is cluster development? I think I know.
Cluster subdivisions are those types of subdivisions. They're permitted in the zoning code in the R-A zoning district, all the way up to the R-5 zoning district. And what it does basically, it provides some flexibility in terms of adjustments to the bulk area requirements within each of those zoning districts. And it does it in a way that allows for relief in terms of lot widths, setbacks, lot depth, lot coverage. And the purpose of allowing that kind of flexibility is to preserve more environmental features.
In R-5, we generally think of R-5 being five houses per acre.
That's correct.
So if it's R-5 and they're doing a cluster development, are they getting around five houses per acre?
No, because we would still take out.
Just move some setbacks and that type of stuff.
That's right.
So there's no more housing going on to that piece of property?
There may be, there may be some intensification in terms of density, depending on where or not the lot or the total property area has significant enough environmental features to control that amount of density. And I think that's where we've had some loopholes, for lack of a better term. Because when you have smaller infill lots, there may not necessarily be significant enough environmental features to minimize your density.
Okay. But you'd never go above the five houses on R-5?
That's right. Because by code, you could not do that.
Okay. So that still falls under that. And then it just goes to the third whereas clause. We would effectively stop all these cluster developments until a study was completed, or review was completed. How many, if you had a best guess, I mean, how many cluster developments are in the pipeline right now where, you know, developers got, you know, got some skin in the game, is rocking and rolling, that we're just going to kind of halt because of this passage?
Just a wild guess? Maybe it doesn't.
It doesn't? Okay. And what's your thought? I mean, at the end of the day, we bring legislation down. And of course, I don't know what that legislation is, or maybe the sponsors, you know, idea of what legislation would be. But if we were to just stop cluster development, and I don't know if that's where you're looking to go, maybe it is. But what happens to those 12 projects? I mean, is there, is there an idea that we grandfather them in? Is there an idea that it's just, hey, it is what it is, sorry about your luck? I mean, is, we put any thought in that? Are we not stopping cluster development? The idea is not to stop it.
Ms. Tate, she's not in her seat. So the intent, when we provide this resolution wasn't, so the ones that are already in a pipeline, this was for future submissions. At least that was the intent when she and I spoke about it, because I think we were a little concerned about projects that were in the pipeline. So the 12 certainly caught me off guard and surprised me. But the intent is for any submission that has not been already sort of reviewed and processed, that if during this collection effort of data, he finds that there are elements that speaks to this being a hindrance to the environment, or to communities that, or specifically the environment, that they should use that provision to sort of halt these particular new submissions that are coming in. That was the language and the intent when we drafted up the letter. It certainly was not to affect ones that are already being processed. Because I do understand how we, that's a lengthy process, and a lot of funds or money have went into that, to getting to that stage. But our, definitely our effort was any new project that has not been already submitted, that has already been processed, or started that processing, that they should consider a moratorium on those specific new activities if this data search finds that cluster development is not as healthy as we thought it was for the environment.
But would you agree that this resolution doesn't necessarily grandfather anyone in? With that third whereas clause?
I mean, that's true. I don't, I don't.
I don't think it.
I don't think it needs it.
It's not binding, but.
Yeah, I don't think it needs it. Because that's not what we were sort of explicitly asking for in the resolution. It's just, I think even when you read the resolution, it states that, and I'll bring it up just to.
Would you be comfortable taking that third whereas off?
I would be fine leaving the resolution as is. Just because I don't think that that requirement is a, is as a significant impact as those who are worried about the future projects being affected. And Ms. Tate could chime in. I think when we drafted this, the letter was certainly intended to provide an opportunity for the administration to place a pause on future projects that were going to be submitted, not ones that were currently already being evaluated, already in the pipeline. I thought that that resolution accomplished that.
Right. This resolution is just asking for a study. It doesn't have the force of law to stop anything that is being developed under current code. I mean, it's an opportunity for this topic to be brought for dialogue. And I think that was the purpose that Councilman Smith asked for. I know there have been a number of people in the public who sought a moratorium. But it is not included in the resolved language. It's just something to consider. And I don't, I don't, I don't see this resolution holding up any current development activities. I think that's up to the administration to consider that and bring something forward.
Mr. Chair. And just one more question, Ms. Tate. I know for years in Pasadena, you know, they want to stop development on the peninsulas. And you know, we hear that all the time. And it's my understanding the county cannot stop that. Now, I'm guessing this, we could get around it, because we'd say, you could still develop that property, R-5. You just can't use the cluster development rules. Is that the difference, I'm assuming?
Well, I mean, the cluster development rules are still in the books. I mean, they're not being removed by this resolution. I think Councilman Fink, what you're talking about in terms of Pasadena, and that's why we have an adequate public facilities law, is it goes into what, can the area handle the development that is being sought? Can they handle the sewer and water facilities? Can they handle the roads, schools, everything else? That's not part of this resolution. I mean, this resolution is more for the council to bring to the administration the concerns that they're hearing from the constituents. That this type of development might not be the right thing for every part of the county, and it might be causing unintended consequences. And the idea, I think you heard from the administration saying, that they are looking into this at this point. Because they are, I don't want to put words in his mouth, that they're recognizing that there may be unintended consequences. So that's just a matter of having this out for discussion, so the councilmen are aware of it.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have missed it, but did you guys say whether you supported the resolution or not?
Yeah, we were fine with the resolution. I think that, I guess I read this a little bit differently than the words that are being used. It doesn't say a study. It says conduct a review, which the Office of Planning and Zoning has been conducting a review. I would see a study as a more formal, lengthy process, but.
Well, I guess that's part of my next question, is this doesn't prescribe what the study or review would look like. There's no timeline. There's no, you know, rule of law behind this, as Ms. Tate said. So my next question is, if we pass this, are you guys going to do anything different? It sounds like you're already reviewing something. So is this just kind of legislative notice, if you will? Which I think is still fine and relevant. But I just, I just want to know, like, we're talking about whether we should take a whereas clause out or not. And I'm like, are you guys going to do anything different either way? I mean, I don't want to start striking stuff out of this.
I guess the best way to put this is, is that if this resolution had not appeared.
Sure.
We would still bring legislation forward to try to correct some of the problems that we've been facing over the last six months as it relates to cluster subdivisions.
Mr. Chair.
Now, when we bring legislation forward that affects any portion of the zoning code or Article 17 as it relates to subdivisions, you have to assume that we've done the appropriate review of the current provisions, and that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it.
Understood.
But, you know, from my perspective, and I'm just speaking, you know, as a planner, there's no real harm to file.
Sure.
In terms of this resolution, we're still going to bring forward legislation. And this is legislation that I think will address a lot of the issues that Mr. Smith has identified, as well as the issues that we've been hearing from the community leadership.
Right. But so if we pass this resolution, are you going to give the council a report or anything before you bring legislation before us?
I don't think we necessarily give a report. I mean, this is saying, didn't say that.
I mean, we will identify.
Can we get a work session?
We will.
Not in May.
I'm sure this bill, I'm sure the bill will go before the work session, yes.
I mean, we will certainly identify to you, when we discuss the bill, what it is that we're trying to achieve and what provisions we're trying to.
Okay. Well, so I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, and my interpretation of this, is should we pass this resolution, it's basically legislative notice that says the council's interested in this. We're concerned with cluster development. And then you guys are going to bring a bill before us, one way or another, and not necessarily going to bring a new report to us or anything. So I still think there's value in doing this.
Yeah, I think when we bring legislation before you, we'll say that we've conducted a review of the cluster development code. And we think that this is the best solution to resolve the issues that we've found with the cluster development.
So last question, if I might, Mr. Chair. The discussion about the moratorium, I mean, the language just say that you should consider legislation with a moratorium. Is that something that you're considering right now? Or is that not on your plate?
We do not have any legislation related to a moratorium on our plate.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smith.
So, Mr. Tom, or actually, for my colleagues up here, did anyone know of a review of legislation on cluster developments prior to this resolution being introduced?
Mr. Smith, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, too. But that's fine.
Mr. Burge.
Mr. Chairman, in response to, you must, yes, I was aware of it.
Did you know, Mr. Walker? I did not know, having, until the resolution.
I was going to ask if you knew, and I was going to ask the administration why they didn't say anything.
No, I actually didn't know.
As soon as we saw the resolution, we called him and said, we're actually doing this.
Right. So part of the collective effort is this resolution drove this conversation to even have a review and bring it up to our level, to say, to everyone's level, not just individual councilmen, but to all of our levels and the public, that this is something that we, the council, is looking wholeheartedly at. And we want to see what your stance is on it. And so I think, I think when it comes to bills, I mean, I've heard in the past legislation that was going to come forth, and then it didn't, doesn't come forth. So I think this kind of holds it to task to say, well, now that you've set on the record that there's going to be legislation, we certainly want to, I'm certainly interested in seeing what that legislation is, and how it affects, or what data you use to mitigate or review the cluster development impact in those situations. So I did not know that there was going to be legislation prior to this resolution being submitted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Think, Mr. Walker, did you have something?
No, that was it.
No.
Mr. Perukka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, as I mentioned, Mr. Smith, I was aware of this. I've had a number of discussions with the administration, including Mr. Tom, with regard to this. As Mr. Tom mentioned, these cluster development issues are largely in my district, are largely in the Broadneck Peninsula.
Well, in District One as well.
Elsewhere as well, yeah. But I, but I was aware of it in there, and we've, I've been involved in discussions with the administration, also with community meetings and briefings by folks. And that's going to kind of lead me, if you don't mind, to ask Mr. Tom a question. It's my understanding, and this is, I'm really summarizing here a little bit. But my understanding is that what has happened with cluster development is that in the smaller, as you, I think you mentioned, in the smaller, in the infill lots, the ideas, the idea where it was not going to increase density sometimes has, with all the machinations and combinations and permutations, that it ends up actually maybe not achieving that goal. There's density problems. Would I be correct in saying that?
That's fair.
So I'm in favor of this resolution, and I've asked a co-sponsor, I would ask a co-sponsor. Because I, in effect, though, I agree with Mr. Trumpauer. This is something, we're asking, and we'll agree with you, we're asking the administration to do something that they're actually already doing. I knew that they were doing it. But I have no problem with respect to legislative notice, you know, formally asking them to conduct this review.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pruski.
Just to follow up. So I think we've had a lot of discussion here, but I think it's so important about the scope and sequence. What kind of timeline are you talking about getting back to us? I mean, I know this doesn't provide that, but are you talking eight months, a year? That's the first question. The second question is, you mentioned the Broadneck Peninsula. I've kind of heard about it. It's not in my district. What about other areas in the district? Is there going to be any community outreach? Or what type of conversation would occur, even with the development community or anyone else, a seat at the table? So I'm just curious how we're inclusive and also making sure that everyone is transparent about what we're trying to do.
Well, there are two major stakeholders involved in this process. One, of course, are the community associations that are immediately affected by some of the development that's going on. But cluster subdivisions are permitted throughout the county. We have been working fairly exclusively with the Growth Action Network, primarily because they're a major umbrella group that represents, in its membership, many community associations throughout the county. So that's our primary outreach. Right now, we're also reaching out to the development community through the Maryland Builders Industry Association, the Maryland Anarundel County Chapter. So, you know, through those organizations, we believe that we're going to have a broad outreach and we'll get the best kind of reaction and comments from the draft that we prepared. In terms of timeline, we think that, as I've stated, that the legislation will address many of the issues that we've been aware of and that have been explicitly expressed to me in our work with the Growth Action Network. I don't see that we're going to be spending eight or nine months to get this bill to you. We're in our final draft, and we're just getting last-minute comments.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Any other discussion? Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Tom, you mentioned that you're in your final draft. I did get a number, a couple, not a number, but a couple of calls today. When did you, it sounded like the majority of the time you've spent talking to Growth Action. Have you talked, when did you start to reach out to the development community?
Just in the last month or so.
Okay.
Last few weeks.
Okay. I am aware that there are issues. I sat in with a meeting that Mr. Perukka.
Let me do clarify that. Okay. I provided the draft to them within the last couple of weeks. But I have talked to them, the development community, in the past through my monthly meetings with the MBIA. So they were aware that we were working on some legislation relative to cluster subdivisions. It's been several months.
And I guess, and I'm not, I understand of having sat through one of the meetings that Mr. Perukka referenced, that there definitely appears to be some issues with the way it's structured currently. But I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that there are, I think, from my perspective, some good things that happen with cluster development as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I don't think it's all 100% bad. I do recognize that there are, what I would say, you know, you called, I think, maybe loopholes earlier in the way that it's crafted. But I just will bring two examples to the council's attention. One is that in my district, there happens to be a home that is historic in nature and developer bought the parcel of land that surrounded that home. And because of cluster development, the way the zoning worked on that parcel, they could have put, could very easily have torn the house down, right, and just plowed homes in there. But instead, my understanding is that they've worked with your office to preserve the view shed of that historic property and then used the cluster development part of the code to push the new homes off to another area of the parcel where it doesn't cause an unsightly set of new, brand-new homes in front of a historic house. That's example number one. Example number two, I think, which is something that those of the council who were here during my first term will recall, there was a piece of property just outside of Crofton Underwood Road that we rezoned RLD, that the community supported, the Greater Proctor Council supported, a number of, all the community groups basically were on board. Because it's, the point was, in creating that RLD zoning, it created a cluster development that actually was able to then preserve north of 100 acres of open space as well as preserve a local horse farm that would otherwise have gone out of business. And so the cluster development was built in such a way where it was on a main road, homes were close together, they were able to hook into water and sewer because the water and sewer was there, they didn't have to run water and sewer lines all the way back on the property, or the other case might have been they actually put well and septic on those parcels and they were at the head of the South River. So in this case, they clustered the homes together, they built them on the road, they were all able to hook into water and sewer, they were able to preserve riding trails on the back of the property, which was the head of the South River, protecting that environmental feature, and they also saved that horse farm as well, using homeowners' association dues to subsidize the horse operation. So, you know, I think there are, I would argue, good things that come out of cluster development. I also understand and agree that there sounds, that there are some issues with the way it's structured and it could be cleaned up.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with those.
So I hope that those are taken into consideration when you, because I don't want to.
Absolutely.
In reaction to a few bad situations, I also don't want to react so strongly that we end up losing a valuable piece of the code that has been used to do some good things as far as development goes.
Yeah, and I would agree with your comment 100%. We certainly don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater because some good things can happen through cluster subdivisions, including, as you pointed out, when you have things a little bit closer together, you do save a lot in terms of impervious coverage, you save a lot in terms of utility costs that is to, which would be reflected eventually in the price of the new home. So there's all kinds of positive things.
Thank you. So I just want to be on the record, it does sound like you all are supportive of the resolution, is that what you're stating publicly?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
That was clear on me. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, let's move into the public hearing. Thank you, gentlemen. Here we have some folks that have signed up to speak, I'm gonna call the first six, Mr. Wayne Richardson, Mr. Ben Roberts, Mr. Paul Spadaro, Ms. Ellen Moss, Ms. Debbie Savlin, and Mr. Dick Lad.
Yeah, that's true.
The Honorable Dick Lad.
The Honorable.
All right, everyone, when it's your turn, please state your name and address for the record and keep your remarks to two minutes, you'll hear a very loud and obnoxious ding when that two minutes hits. But we'll start off with Mr. Wayne Richardson.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, Wayne Richardson, I live in Charverage Development, 462 Redford Drive, a 30-year resident down in Anarone County.
Did you have, go ahead with your remarks if you want to say anything.
Oh, you want me to finish up?
Please.
That's great, I love taking the microphone, thank you. Yeah, my concern and reason for being here, in the Charverage Development, we're facing a cluster development issue at this point. There's a development going in near us, so I won't get into specifics about that because it's not the reason we're here testifying directly about that one particular spot. But just the reviews of what we've seen dealing with planning and zoning for the last 18 months, let's say, back and forth with modifications to sketch plans by the developers coming to do the planning for this, at least a dozen variations have been made to make sure this cluster development moves forward and they're really off the chart as far as code violation. So as far as Mr. Walker here saying there's some great ones out there, I'm sure there are, we don't see it in our local community, what's happening here in regard to some of the things Mr. Tom talked about, about setbacks and how many units would be in a cluster development comparison to an R5. So I see a lot of disagreement with that. I think a study is needed, I think there needs to be some adjustments made to the code. Not against development, people should build houses, people in the business should make a living and they should do it in a rightful way. Concern is the fact that in the cluster development situation like we have, we're concerned about a lot of runoff down into our rec area, which is already having a problem with runoff of some additional communities. Worried about price comps because of the size of the homes being proposed compared to what we have in our area and some surrounding communities there, they're concerned about resale values. Jumper's Hole Road's already a parking lot at certain times. Anarone School System, the new schools being built, we still have a capacity issue in some of the classes. Just a variation of things, I think, that a study would pull out that maybe there would be some room for modification on the cluster development issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Hi, Ben Roberts, 543 Benforce Drive. I'm also the president of the Charverage Board of Directors for the Homeowners Association. To Councilman Trumbauer's point with concerns over the current, we have concerns over the current interpretation of cluster development. I think you had asked about the definition and the looseness of it. Through this study or review, we would love to see very specific definitions that are followed and enforced and we would love to see some independent experts involved. Our issue is that the same people that we see charged with enforcing the county code right now are the same people that are going to be involved in drafting this study or review. And I feel like that's a conflict of interest. We'd like to see some independent people brought in to add their expertise to that. Mr. Walker mentioned the good points, the historical building, the 100-acre horse farm. What we're seeing is a developer attempting to save a few specimen trees in a small conservation area in order to maximize the number of houses that they can put in that lot. The same developers previously paid fees in lieu to eliminate specimen trees when they were in their way. So they're using it to their advantage when it works best for them. So there's no other reason to use cluster development on this very narrow parcel of land, it's 7.89 acres. And again, I guess I'm getting into the details of this piece of land because that's what affects me, that's what I know of cluster development. But it's a piece of land that was previously determined to be residue from another development. So we don't feel that cluster development is appropriate in these types of situations. We want to see that the code is made more specific to avoid the abuse. Finally, we feel like the code in general needs to be improved because even if more specifics go in for cluster development, the county planning and zoning officer has the ability to allow, grant modifications to overrule this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Roberts, I don't disagree with you. And sitting down with your, you know, your diagrams, it certainly does look like they were trying to fit a, you know, squeeze a whole bunch of homes into a narrow tract of land. But it doesn't sound, I mean, your testimony, Mr. Richardson, and your testimony as well keep referring to the study, but it doesn't even sound like the administration's willing to do the study beyond what they've already done. So is it your intent to, I would hope that your intent is to follow the piece of legislation that they introduced and to come to us with suggestions that you would like to see if it doesn't include things that you have seen in your process? And I think one of the things that struck me in the meeting in particular was the whole modification process and the fact that there seems to be a lack of transparency, you have to keep calling to check to see if somebody's requested a modification, that doesn't seem like that should be the process. It seems like it should be more transparent, that if someone has inquired about a specific project and there's a modification request that's being made, that whoever's inquired about it should then be automatically notified, right? That there's a modification request in for this project that would give them the opportunity to weigh in before the planning and zoning officer makes their decision or determination. So it's certainly my intent to add language like that to this bill if it's possible, if it's not, then maybe in some other format. Because I do feel like from a process standpoint, the current process lacks transparency in the way that it's being done. The onus shouldn't be on you to constantly make phone calls to the county to try to figure out what the developer is or isn't doing. That should be public, published, online, I mean, we're in the internet age, it should be pretty simple to put that kind of stuff out there and blast email if nothing else. So I just wanted to make, put those comments on the record.
Appreciate your support.
No problem.
And that is our intent, to follow the process and request amendments.
All right, Mrs. Spadaro.
Hello, my name is Paul Spadaro, I'm president of the Magathie River Association and I'm here today to really support Resolution 1116. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for introducing it and Mr. Peruca for co-sponsoring this resolutions. My friends, I have to say that I've listened, and I'm going to paint broad strokes to the minute that I have to talk, that cluster development has been broken, it's been broken for years and the developers have taken advantage of this. And I don't want to go in deeper to that, but the advantage that they have is that as a result of that, they put in more homes, more cars, and put more stress onto our river systems. And I'm the one that sees this, I do the measuring of the water, so I'm familiar with what's been going on here. R5 zoning is not a government entitlement program, it never was. However, because of the weak county code, the developers have, that code has enabled the developers to take advantage of that loophole, which the county totally admits and it's been there for decades. And it is true, it's not, you know, when the county says, oh, R5 and nobody built more houses on R5, that's not always true. They have been able to put more units through various types of clustering. And I've seen this over the decades and I've seen the results of that on our rivers. I have some concerns about some of the subdivisions that are in the pipeline right now. Some of these subdivisions are, have been brought up here that are going to really have a strong impact. And what is happening is we're perpetuating this loophole. Since the county already admitted that it has a loophole, I feel we should be cautious and find a way that we should at least pause the subdivisions that are in the pipeline that are not permitted, that the ground isn't broken. I support this resolution and I hope the county will, council will vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Spadaro. Ms. Moss.
Ellen Moss, I'm with the Jessup Improvement Association. My address is 7503 Gina Nicole Court in Jessup. The idea of the study on a cluster development came to us as a result of a meeting with Nancy Shrum from the Steve Schu's office when she came to visit our community and was able to see the effects that cluster development has in our neighborhoods, which are primarily zone R1. We spoke to Councilman Smith about it and we thank him for listening to our concerns and suggested this, that we do this study and the, looking at the impact environmentally and financially on cluster development. I'd like to note also that we did not ask for the moratorium on cluster development specifically, but we appreciate it. We do see more homes, we do see a lot of flooding in our neighborhoods because of the cluster development and the runoff and where it goes and the cost that it is not, I mean, for our neighbors on the value of their homes and what it costs for them to deal with the effects that cluster development causes, primarily flooding. We have a lot of flooding now in our neighborhoods. We do have more than one, if you ask how many homes can you put in a cluster development that's R1, you're not getting one home per acre. They are clustered together and the homes can be built on postage-sized lots. So are you really saving any, you know, you're supposed to have these environmental green area spaces, but really what happens is they take down all the trees and then there's no place for the runoff to go.
Thank you. Ms. Savlin.
My name is Deborah Samlin, I live at 7507 Gina Nicole Lane, Jessup, Maryland, and I'm the vice president of the Jessup Improvement Association. I want to follow up, I'm not going to reiterate what everybody else has already told you, but I am going to thank Mr. Smith for meeting with us. We actually asked for an independent study, not a review by staff. Mr. Fink, I'm going to answer a question you asked earlier regarding what is cluster development? In simple terms, cluster development is a way for developers to get around the current zoning and put more density on a piece of land. That's what it is in layman's terms. I have a planning background and it's something that's become a popular tool to be used to maximize the land available for a developer to build on. Again, I can't fault the developer for wanting to make money, but the cost to the residents who live in the community needs to be considered. And I would suggest strongly and I hope and encourage each one of you not to have a staff review, but to have an independent consultant do an outside study of the cluster development on the communities throughout the county, not just the peninsula area, but throughout the entire county. And that you get the results, that way you know it's verified what is happening. Cluster development was put in place, again, to allow more density than is allowed on a piece of land. And we are seeing erosion of properties in neighboring communities where cluster development's being built in our communities. We're seeing flooding because of this, because they have taken down all the natural barriers that would normally absorb the runoff from snow and from rain. They take all the trees down and put a few little trees back up that are going to take 20 or 30 years to grow back up. And it's really having a detrimental impact on our communities, so I implore and I ask of you and I beg of you to please do an outside independent study on cluster development and not just rely on what staff is telling you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Latt.
Good evening, Dick Lad. 1537 Shipshew Road, in a previous life, I had the pleasure of listening to a lot of the situations develop about cluster zoning as it happened in Mr. Peruca's district. I have sat through in the last number of months a fairly comprehensive review of all the problems that I have seen and am aware of and looked through the code and worked with a number of people in the community and have, in my opinion, having sat up there, that the looksee that has been done through all the communities involved has been quite rigorous, very thorough. And the result that Mr. Tom has shared with a number of the people who have been doing that, it has been fair. So I'm sitting here to tell you that the review that Larry has done has been pretty well done and it will provide you with an excellent start point to consider the changes that he's done. The thing that I would like to add is that the extensive review that the ladies suggested we undertake about an independent review, I would argue to you is best done after you redo the review of the code that will be brought forward, I hope, within a matter of weeks and see how it is interpreted by the community. I would tell you that every conceivable loophole that me and my madness and getting down in the weeds could think of, we've tried to think through and be fair about it. But there will be some things that we have missed and I think we need to wait and let the code that he's going to redo and changes to the process that has been proposed on there, I think, as far as I can see, will be, you will see them to be fair and fairly thorough. And so I say to Pete that I think you're right, that we do need to have a review, but I would argue to you that the point of that should be after we see what this is going to take, how it's going to be interpreted and played and leave it go at that. So I urge you to wait for a couple of weeks and allow the comments that come in, I think you're going to be very pleasantly surprised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latt. Thank you all. We do have two more speakers that have signed up, Mr. Steve Miller, Mr. Amy Leahy.
Mr. Chair.
And then we have four additional seats for anyone else wishing to speak, it's last call, if there's anyone else wishing to speak on bill, or I'm sorry, Resolution 1116, please come forward as well. Mr. Walker.
That's fine, Mr. Latt already left, I was going to ask another question, that's fine.
I'm sure you have his vote number.
I wanted to get it on the record.
Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council.
Mike's not on.
Got you, you're on.
My name is Steve Miller and I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis, Maryland. I am very pleased that Councilman Smith has offered Resolution 1116. I live in a relatively new cluster development comprised of both single-family homes and townhouses and serve as the president of its homeowners' association. I was drawn to this community by its relatively small footprint of only 110 units, modest lot sizes, and by the fact that woods surrounding the area were largely preserved. However, while I am pleased with my decision to buy into this development, I was not fully aware that approximately half of the community, most of this in the single-family home area, would have public infrastructure, while the other half, mostly in the town. would have public infrastructure, while the other half, mostly in the townhouse area, would be designated as private. In the private area, the association shoulders the future costs of maintaining several roads to include snow plowing, sidewalks, stormwater management systems, reforestation, streetlights, and even six fire hydrants. I did not, nor did the other directors, realize how difficult it would be to fairly allocate some of these significant expenses among the two different types of homeowners who live in this bifurcated cluster development. One of the biggest surprises, however, is the fact that the county's public infrastructure is warranted by the developer's two-year maintenance bond, whereas the private infrastructure of the community has no warranty. Furthermore, we were not allowed to meet with inspectors after the private part of the community was declared ready for inspection by the developer, nor observe inspectors when they did their inspections. We've documented our observations and expressed our concern to the Office of Inspections and Permits, as well as to constituent services. And I hope that this resolution will be passed, and the county will reach out to HOAs like ours for feedback on the issues we have seen in implementing cluster developments.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's on. Okay. All right. Good evening, Councilman, Chairman of the Council, and the County Council. My name is Amy Leahy, and I live at 712 Monmouth Avenue in Severna Park. And I am speaking here tonight on behalf of the Greater Severna Park Council, which has also been very actively engaged in discussions that have been going on, both with Mr. Tom's office and other areas of the community, other umbrella organizations and other, you know, other developments that are concerned about what's going on. Recently, Mr. Tom published an article in the Severna Park Voice where he talked about the zoning, and sort of was a, the article was supposed to be a primer on zoning laws. And in that particular column, he actually called, acknowledged that the cluster zoning is an unfortunate loophole, which I think we've probably heard him talk about that here tonight also. So cluster zoning does not follow the codified zoning requirements for R1, R2, or R5, and allows for homes to be squeezed onto smaller lots with none of the setbacks that are currently in place for any of these other subdivisions that are under standard zoning, under standard subdivision regulations. These lots do not have to provide any usable yard area for personal enjoyment, and will contain onsite water infiltration devices, which will be required to be maintained by the homeowners. There will be absolutely no land area for someone to even put up a playground in the backyard or playset for their children.
Please summarize.
He wants you to summarize.
Oh. So I will say that I would request that you all pass this resolution. One of the problems, one of the concerns that we have now is that one of the subdivisions that has been under consideration for the last two and a half years, that the Severna Park Council and other communities have been trying to work with Mr. Tom's office on, has now recently been approved for sketch plan. So it's in the pipeline, and it is moving forward, and we just would like to have our concerns not fall on deaf ears at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Slocken, then?
Good evening. It's Ann Flickston, and I am the executive director of Growth Action Network. We have been talking with Mr. Tom about the problems, and I agree with Mr. Walker that there are good uses for cluster development, but what we're seeing, and the reason these folks are here, is the part that's broken, that's broken down, where there's really no public benefit. There's no, the things that are causing the biggest problems are small, unusually strange lots that probably people didn't think they could build on, so that they try to put a lot of housing together. And one of our researchers found out that in certain categories of zoning, you can have a lot that's smaller than a mobile home lot in a residential area. And a lot of people that want to buy these houses don't realize that they probably can't add much to the footprint, and they can't have a yard in the back. So that's part of the problem. The other part is, there's really no trade-off. They've clustered as much as they can, and what's left is sort of ravines and things they can't build on. Now, that's the bad side. There are some builders who are not doing that. You know, they're doing cluster in a responsible way. But I've got people from South County, North County, Central County, that are having these bad ones that are causing the problems. And I think that's the point we're trying to make, that we need to rein in these subdivisions that aren't working for the environment and not working for the neighbors at all. And that's, and I would like you to think about what to do about the bad ones that are in the pipeline. I don't know exactly how to advise you, but that's a tough one, but there are a few in there that really are pretty bad.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Walker?
Ms. Flickston, so it's your testimony that there are situations where, I mean, I'm assuming you feel that it was probably, my impression is it was designed because it was helping the environment, because, right, we're trying to cluster homes together. So there are situations. And in your opinion, and I'm just asking this, it's just, you know, for whatever it's worth, in your opinion, is it, are these situations that we are hearing about, are they the exception, or are they the rule, in your opinion?
I think in the last few years, I would say that they were the exception, but I think because land has become more scarce, and there are not as many large pieces of property out there, when the infill is used, a lot of times, people had said before, that can't be built on. And so it's the clustering on these small pieces of land that don't have much room for the water to go on their land, and they don't have much room for the public, you know, to enjoy trees or anything. So it's more intense in the last 18 months, 12 months.
And Mr. Tom indicated that he's working and has worked with you on this issue.
Yes.
Has been discussing it with you.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the legislation that he's drafted?
We had a meeting of Growth Action and a whole lot of folks last week, and he sent us the draft, and I haven't read it word for word, but it looks pretty good to me. I would like to read it, and I would like to, he asked us for our comments, so we intend to do that.
That was what I was going to ask you, was what your opinion was of what was being, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to gauge is whether or not the legislation that's coming, in your mind, addresses the issues that are being, that we're hearing about from the community.
I would trust and hope. I haven't read it word for word, and that's what I want to be able to do, is really read it. And I've sent it around to our members in asking them to look at, you know, is this going to cover the big problems you've seen? Because all of a sudden, we started hearing about, you know, some really strange developments that we're getting through somehow by the language, but not by the purpose of what it was supposed to be doing.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Public hearing is now closed on 1116. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1116.
Resolution requesting the county executive launch a review of the cluster development provisions.
Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Chair, just briefly.
Ms. Smith?
You know, I do want to say one last comment in reference to this overall process. We should always seek, this isn't a hit on the developers. It just isn't. But I think it's certainly our responsibility to, when we have citizens who are concerned about a number of different issues, we're never going to, we as legislators, you're always going to have citizens that either you agree or may not disagree. But I think, from my standpoint, as I mentioned before, being the jarhead that I am and uneducated on cluster development, I think it's at least wise to have the discussion with the county and have them sort of do that thorough review, because, you know, Ms. Sandlin, Ms. Moss brought up some key points on, I don't know what I don't know, and you don't know, or we don't know what we don't know. And so I don't think it's a bad thing to try to improve on how we conduct business, either with developers or whatever the case is. I certainly want them to be successful, and I've shown in the past that that's the case. But I think it's also at least responsible to try to meet in the middle and hear the concerns of those who are affected by those decisions, which is the citizens. And so that's kind of the summation of this resolution, and just hopefully you all agree with it. So thank you, Ms. Chair.
Great. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1116 is passed.
Please read Resolution 1216.
Resolution recognizing the potential benefits of the stepping up program.
Mr. Marzick?
Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. Joining me up front, Adrian Meckler from the County Mental Health Association, as well as Hamilton Tyler from the Office of Law. Mr. Tyler also serves as the chair of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the county. Resolution 1216 is a request that the county recognizes the stepping up initiative, which is a national movement, to raise the awareness of the overrepresentation of people with mental illnesses or co-occurring illnesses in our jails, and also an attempt to reduce these numbers in our county system. As you see in front of you, there's two parts to this. The first is to try to set a goal to safely reduce the number of people in our jails with mental illnesses or co-occurring illnesses. And then the second is to try to identify some data-driven strategies to actually reduce these numbers. If it's, I would like to have Ms. Meckler and Mr. Tyler just add their two cents from both the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, as well as the County Mental Health Agency as well, on this resolution.
As far as the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Ms. Meckler presented the program to the council, and the council saw the benefits of it and voted in favor to prepare a resolution to submit to the council, and believes that it's certainly a good program and kind of a no-lose situation. From the legal standpoint, the resolution is drafted such that, in order to obtain the benefits of the program, the resolution is necessary. That's one of the requirements. But the resolution as drafted does not require the county to expend any resources whatsoever. It just permits it to use those resources and obtain those resources if it wants to. If it sees the resource, determines that the resources are not appropriate, then it's not required to use them. But only benefits can come to us from this, and I'll defer to Ms. Meckler on the subsequent aspects.
Thank you. My name is Adrian Meckler, and I represent the Mental Health Authority for the county. As these gentlemen mentioned, this is just really a formal acknowledgement by the county council to address the problem of the overrepresentation of people in our detention centers with mental illness and substance use disorders. Basically, what this will do is allow my organization to have access to a national technical advisory board. There's toolkits available online and subject matter experts that would otherwise cost my agency money that we don't have. But through participation in this program, it's a free benefit for our county. It is, the hope is to divert people from being in the detention center by offering them treatment and other resources and programs that we already exist, but making the coordination of care more just beneficial and better outcomes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Perutka?
Can I just ask, you mentioned the resources. Where do the resources come from? You mentioned technical help at a national level.
Right. It's a national initiative put together by the National Association of County Behavioral Health Directors. And most of the resources that they have are federally funded. It's not really, they, in the future, they may offer some grants, and I'd like the county to be in a position to be able to apply for those grants in a meaningful way. A lot of the initiatives that, or the programs that they're doing, we already have started in this county. So I'd like to be able to continue that work and enhance it.
So this resolution we're looking at now doesn't accept, doesn't authorize you to accept any grants. It just authorizes you to participate in this program?
To access the tech, right. Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Resolution 1216? Seeing the movement in the audience, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1216.
Resolution recognizing the potential benefits of the stepping up program.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven, the votes in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1216 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1716.
An ordinance concerning subdivision and development, public works agreements.
All right. Administration, do you have anything else to say on this?
I don't. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we've discussed this at both the work session and amended the bill at the last council meeting. We would ask for your favorable support.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? Nope. Open up the public hearing. I do see we have some folks that have signed up for this.
No, it's 1816, isn't it?
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Great. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Bill 1716? Seeing the movement in the audience, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
An ordinance concerning subdivision and development, public works agreements.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
No, there's an amendment.
Please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 3. This is a technical amendment to move a reference to 173304C to its intended place.
Move to adopt. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Mr. Marzick?
This is just a mistake in the drafting of the last amendment.
Any questions, comments? Please call a roll on Amendment Number 3.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is passed.
Since this is a technical amendment, we will vote on the bill tonight. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on Bill 1716.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 1716 as amended is passed.
Please read the title of 1816.
An ordinance concerning licensing, swimming pools and spas, lifeguards and signs.
Mr. Marzick, anything else to say on this?
No, just, we asked you to support this bill as amended at the last council meeting. Just a reminder, if I may, that we did amend it to be five feet shallower, and also added the amendment to require increased signage at these locations.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the comment, or comments from the council? No? We'll open up the public hearing. We do have some folks that have signed up for this bill, for 1816. Amy Rohr and Leon Chidams. I'm sorry, I'm sure I butchered both those names. And we had you in front of us. I shouldn't. Last week, I shouldn't have butchered that.
You did great.
Yeah, right.
I can't pronounce it.
Yeah, all right. Anyone else wishing to speak, 1816? We have four additional seats, last call. And we'll start with Amy, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Amy Rohr. I am president and CEO of the Maryland Hotel and Lodging Association. We are here again tonight in support of this bill. I have one of our members with us, Leon Chidams, from the Spring Hill Suites, BWI. We really are just here to answer any questions, if you have them, since the hearing two weeks ago.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I agree with Amy. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
You're here to support the bill?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, thank you guys very much. This was an easy night. Public hearing on 1816 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 1816.
An ordinance concerning licensing, swimming pools and spas, lifeguards and signs.
I do not have an amendment in front of me, so we will, any discussion? We'll call the final roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 1816 as amended is passed.
The lack of amendments on 1816, we made up for in 2016. We've got 20, 23 coming up. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 2016.
An ordinance concerning the Odenton Growth Management Area and Plan Review.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. With me at the table is Greg Swain from the Office of Law, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Bob Lyv from the County Executive's Office is also out in the audience, as well as Bob Hannan from Economic Development, all of whom played a meaningful role in pulling together this plan, and have put a lot of time and effort. So I would like to first thank them for their effort in pulling together this massive undertaking, and we really appreciate their efforts. As we discussed at the work session, this is a new draft of the Odenton Town Center Master Plan. Redevelopment of this district is one of the administration's high priorities for West County, and this master plan will promote that goal by guiding the development activity in the town center. Again, we discussed this at the work session, so I don't think we need to belabor anything. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and obviously And this master plan will promote that goal by guiding the development activity in the town center. Again, we discussed this at the work session, so I don't think we need to belabor anything. We'd be happy to answer any questions. And obviously, there are a large number of amendments that we have worked with, Councilman Pruski with, over the last several weeks to amend the plan. And we will be offering amendment at the appropriate time as well.
Wonderful. Any questions from the council right now? No? Thank you all. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 2016? There is. I've got a list. So I will call you folks up. Mr. David Lynch, Ms. Lars Skals... Skalalsi. I'm sure I butchered that. Ms. Joanie McDuffie, Ms. Sarah Shoemaker, Ms. Tracy... And you?
Helen.
Helen? I'm sorry. Mr. Stuart Tile, Ms. Claire Louder. And I've run out of space. Actually, Claire, just wait one second. I called too many people. I'm sorry. We'll start with David, please. Members, state your name and address for the record and keep your remarks to two minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. David Lynch represents Sarah Shoemaker and Lars Skalalsi, who are residents in the Odenton Historic District. As drafted, the proposed plan falls woefully short of preserving the Odenton Town Center's historic district. And if implemented as drafted, we believe it will set the stage for the eradication of the district's unique character. My clients have involved in every stage of this process. They approached the planning, asked to meet and discuss their concerns. Planning refused to meet. We engaged... We engaged a professor of planning from Ohio State to provide comments on the plan. We submitted those comments to planning, but they ignored us. We attended every meeting. After the next draft came out, we revised our comments and attended the planning board. We addressed the planning board at that stage. The draft did not reflect any of our concerns. So here we are tonight, and I've submitted six amendments, which we believe are the minimum changes necessary to preserve the historic district. These amendments address briefly the boundary of the historic subarea, specifically the East Mark parking lot, delineation of the historic subarea Block Eight, the period of significance, the minimum right-of-way width, the modification procedure, and the allowance for lenience from the criteria in Blocks Eight and Nine. Tonight, I'm going to address the first two amendments. My clients and other citizens at the table will address the remaining. First, if you look at your packet, and I'm not sure you'll have it, but Proposed Amendment Number One, the boundary of the historic subarea set forth on pages 49 and 50 should be modified to include the area of the East Mark parking lot. The East Mark lot should be removed from Block 1A and designated as Historic Subarea Block 10. Currently...
Please summarize.
Currently, Block 10 is part of the historic district. Removal... There's no sound planning rationale anywhere in the code for removal of the parking lot. It should remain in the lot. And secondly...
Quickly.
Sure. Block Eight should be part of Block 10. It provides a buffer zone. And again, there's no sound planning rationale for the change.
Thank you. Next speaker, Laura.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I'm happy to be here to address you. I'm going to address the proposed amendment for modifications. Modifications are just bad for the historic district. The present Office of Planning and Zoning grants these so freely and markedly in the areas of height and density increases that the protective requirements of the master plan is being lost. On the other hand, variances by definition should be used sparingly and have a procedure to follow for granting a variance. Therefore, the amendment requests that variance law in... be expressed as expressed in the county code should replace modifications in the master plan and even the playing fields for the residents in the historic district. And so the next amendment I want to address to you is Amendment Number Six. There's language regarding leniency for the benefit of developers in the historic district, referring to Chapter Four, Section 9.5, 4(c). This lenience language pretty much grants an automatic modification without even an app... without even an application. So, you know, the question is, what is the Office of Planning and Zoning going to allow here and next? The section is legislating for the benefit of developers to the detriment of the residents. Once again, the historic district is being eroded. It's being divided and compromised. So please, look at the six amendments and adopt them and, you know, protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanie?
Good evening to everybody. My name's Joanie McDuffie at 437 North Patuxent Road. I've been a resident at that, they call it, historic house for 33 years. My two concerns are, first of all, we attended the Planning Advisory Board meeting and it was brought out, the right-of-ways were incorrect in the master plan, especially as it relates to Becknell Avenue, which is currently a 40-foot right-of-way. The plan has it as 54 feet. North Patuxent Road is a 30-foot right-of-way. The plan has it as 54. I might be a little off on the numbers here, but this is deceitful. It's deceitful, I believe, to the transit-oriented development that's being pushed in this area. They're looking at this like these roads can handle the growth that's being pushed into our area. They can't. One of the recommendations from the Planning Advisory Board was against expansion on the east side of the tracks as it relates to the parking lot. Secondly, after three years now, ever since I found out we were in town center, because we didn't have a clue, anyone on the east side of the tracks did not have a clue that we were in town center. We want out. I've been asking how to get out for the last three years. Does someone need to propose an amendment? By your own definition, on this bill you're voting on tonight, it promotes commercial and employment uses for the development of high-density residential. That's not us. We're a 100-year-old neighborhood, an established neighborhood, that the clustering really rings true with us. We want out of town center, and I don't know where to go for help. I'm asking you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. My name is Sarah Shoemaker, more familiarly known as Sally Shoemaker. I reside at 453 North Patuxent Road, Odenton, which is part of the historic subarea of the Odenton Town Center. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the Odenton Heritage Society in place of our Vice President, Andrew Powell, who has had a family emergency. I would like to present authorization, which I did present, and I would like to submit two items for your consideration and deliberation on this revision of the master plan. The first is the society's request and recommendations for the changes to the master plan and the rationale for those changes and recommendations. The second document is from a firm that the society hired to complete an official survey of the historic district that would meet application requirements for listing on the national... listing on the National Register, which the master plan cites. As is stated in the information sheet provided, EHT Traceries is a research and consulting firm specializing in architectural history and historic preservation. The OHS contracted with EHT to undertake a thorough survey of the Odenton Historic District and to provide the society with a report that would accomplish three objectives. One, conduct all field work, all the field work that would be required for submitting an application to the National Trust for listing on the... listing the district on the National Register, and specifically to include researched historic context and period of significant documentation. Secondly, was to assess and evaluate the contributions. The third, actually what I'll summarize in saying that while the report is not finalized, the submitted letter from EHT will give credence to that... to our concerns that the master plan and our concerns about the master plans are not only legitimate but important for protecting the area.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Lynch, thank you for your email earlier this week. I have a couple of questions for you. You gave us a pretty large stack of stuff to absorb. Fortunately, if one of... any one of these amendments that we have in front of us coming up next passes, then we get a couple of weeks to sort of review that along with what you've already sent us. I guess I get the sense that it's... First of all, I guess I was frustrated, I guess, or taken aback that you had indicated that planning and zoning offices did not return your... or refused to meet with you at all?
Right.
Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. We requested a meeting and they refused to meet.
Who did you request a meeting with? Was it directly with Mr. Tom or...?
It was through the administration.
The administration.
I don't have the emails in front of me.
The purpose... I guess I'm trying to understand the... It sounds like, and I'm, you know, I'm not as familiar with that area. I've driven back in there a number of times on different tours and things. But... And so I'm familiar with some of the smaller homes that are in there as well as the historic building. I've been in there where it's for different events or whatever. So your concern, or your client's concern, it sounds like, is what I would refer to maybe as encroachment by the town center? I mean, it sounds like in some cases, they weren't even aware of the fact that they were part of the town center. Is that accurate or...?
I think encroachment's part of it. I think it's sort of the whole... the multitude of all the... I'd say intrusions might be a better word. And just, I mean, as you... If you look at the boundaries of the historic district, the proposed plan eliminates a significant portion of it, so it's shrinking. You know, my clients could probably testify more to the history of it. I think every iteration gets a little smaller and the development gets more dense.
Did at some point, did they support the Odenton Town Center master plan? It was... I mean, this has been around for a while. It's not new. This is...
Yes. Sally, she can address that question better.
Maybe you could answer that question, ma'am. I don't... If you don't mind using the microphone, so we got to him.
Yes, I helped write the bill.
The original bill?
The original bill.
Okay.
I served on the very first Oversight Committee. I've been a proponent of the master plan from get-go. And the agreement for the... for what has occurred was that in trade-off for part of the his... really the history of the community was where Town Core is. And the trade-off at that time was to leave the old Odenton section as being undeveloped into the high-density. The railroad tracks...
By saying the old section, you're referring to the individual, single-family homes that are currently located in that area?
Yes.
Okay.
But the plan...
Because it seems like over... I mean, I'm not trying to interrupt. I apologize. But it seems like, from having been out there and taking tours of the place, I mean, and I see what's going on, it seems like there's been a lot of progress and a lot of good things that have happened. The old factory, you know, being torn down and some break...
The whole question becomes the clarification of what is trying to be preserved. There... The appearance is and what is in the plan emphasizes more on the structures themselves. And yet, it is the district in which is being preserved and the district itself, which is the neighborhood. That's the context. The district gains significance because of the history of the community and based on the railroad. What's in the master plan is... falls on the shoulders of the property owners. And it's their structures rather than the district. So the plan does not spell out the difference. It does not spell out the purpose of what or the context. What the Heritage Society did was to try to get a study to find out what the actual contact... historic context and a... an architectural study of why is a building considered as a contributing resource.
So is your concern mostly community buildings or is it?
No.
Homes?
No.
I got the sense it was homes earlier.
It is the neighborhood. It is the character of the neighborhood, and the master plan talks about the character.
But is there anything that prevents... I mean, or I guess maybe a better way to put it, is there any way... anything in there that forces someone to develop their property in a certain way? Like if one of your neighbors decided to sell their house, do they have to? Do they have to participate or is it just...
Some of the... some of what is being in the master plan evidently is giving that gearing that, yes, it's going to have to be controlled. And then to con... to... For the county has done a job of trying to placate, and that's not the proper term, but to make sure that it's not having a hardship, building in a modification. I think that the... what was submitted by the Heritage Society is showing out the conflicts. And what we're saying is the conflicts are what needs to be resolved. We've specified, I think, particular ones where it says you're to do this, but further down the plan, it says this is an exception. Or if you have property that is this way, it will not... you don't have to go by that requirement.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My intention is to support the amendments, I mean, that Mr. Pruski's putting forward tonight. Do you... Are you familiar with the amendments that he's...
I have seen the amendments, yes.
Do you oppose any of those or...?
Well, they're... I'm not in the position right now for... to comment on the amendments for the Heritage Society because the society, the board has not seen it, so I can't comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, just, I mean, from my perspective, I think, you know, there's... this is unique to Mr. Pruski's district. So there's usually quite a bit of deference given to, you know, the council representative who represents the area, this is impacting. So my intention is to, you know, to co-sponsor the amendments that he's introduced. I'll certainly look at the ones that you've submitted to us. And if I have questions, I'll be in touch with you for sure.
The most positive thing is, and the most concerning thing, that would be the major intrusion, would be the development of the east side parking lots.
And what are they proposing?
With the amendments withdrawing that, it would be extremely helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It was my pleasure, Mr. Walker. Tracy?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tracy Hohen. I represent my family businesses, Eastern Excavating and Eastern Mechanical, both located at 1352 Odenton Road, Odenton, Maryland. My deeply rooted family tree extends to include the Downs, the Murrays and the O'Mallies. As my Aunt Catherine so beautifully penned in her book, "Odenton is the town the railroad built and the town my family settled many years ago." However, beyond my own personal interest here, I can see no other historical value Odenton can offer. It is my understanding this is all based on brick and mortar, significance of only a few homes. If Odenton has architectural history worth preserving, I can assure you, it's not found within the commercial properties within Block Nine. There seems no logic that I can decipher to justify applying historic limitations to businesses, which will limit future resale opportunities, limit structural and property improvements, limit our growth and expansion, and perhaps most importantly, carry the permanent label of historical and all the proverbial panache that will follow. Governor Hogan has stated that there is a real disconnect between Annapolis and the rest of the state of Maryland. There seems to be no better example of nonsensical, out-of-control regulations than this portion of the Odenton Town Center master plan, a portion which has lumped small businesses[1759.66] As of today, our options are as follows: leave Anarundel County, shut down our doors permanently, go bankrupt trying to stay and function under historical regulations, or find another piece of property in Anarundel County that is properly zoned, which leads me to a whole other issue within this county, because I'm sure you know as well as I do, there is nothing zoned which will welcome my business anywhere here right now. And of course, to buy, we have to sell, which returns us to the original issue. I know-
Let's find, summarize.
Okay. I know this plan's been many years and many revisions in the making. We've done our best to keep up and follow along and to help. We did have direct communication in January 2016 with Planning and Zoning, which assured us that we will not be impacted in the way it is used, developed, or any regulatory action. We speak tonight in hopes that this is the truth, and no unjust regulations or false labels will be applied to the commercial properties within Block Nine.
Thank you.
Stuart.
Good evening, everyone, Chairman, council members. Why to support this bill? I and many others with the Odenton Now Coalition, which is a group of professionals and developers decided to form together because we were going down to the county and asking the same questions that we needed answered. And we've been working together now since 2008, I believe. Many others of the Odenton Now Coalition and the West Anarundel County Chamber of Experience in Developing Projects in the Town Center and the Town Center Core, which gives us tremendous three-dimensional perspective versus the one-dimensional experience of planners, reviewers, and even many of you in the council who don't regularly venture into the west county. Five projects myself I've been through, and each of them have various issues that we've encountered. And it's our experience in developing in the Odenton Town Center where the county is interested in development going based on infrastructure that we've encountered these problems. And the experiences of these problems are what in the building is before you today. In addition to the issues with the current plan that becomes obvious when trying to implement, market changes need to also be recognized. The success in Odenton becoming a bedroom, Odenton Now is becoming a bedroom community like it was to the Post a long time, I mean, to the National Plastics Factory a long time ago. It's a tremendous bedroom community to NSA and the Post and the 118 agencies that it serve on the Post. It's amazing the residential growth in Odenton right now and what's happened. And everyone's decided that the commercial growth is going to surround us, but people do want to live in Odenton. Delay of the land, meaning sizes, uses, locations, is not conducive to developing under the previous plans, and these continue to be discovered as various projects are presented for approval. The county's budget is unfortunately weight-heavy on its dependency development fees, which is why changes need to be made in order to support revisions which improve the ability for both county and developers to efficiently in processing so that the revenue stream can continue to match what is anticipated for the budget.
Please summarize.
I also want to thank you all for the reduction of the development fees, which I think will go a long way in the future. I also want to thank, and I am going to summarize here, if you're not familiar enough with the Odenton Town Center plan, it's not a reason to not approve the legislation. Councilman Pruski and his aide Dave Helmicki attended most, if not all, the work sessions with the Chamber-
Thank you, Stuart.
-and the Odenton Now Coalition. And I appreciate his help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Our next round of speakers is Ms. Claire Lauter and Aaron Keel. Then we have spots for four more speakers, if anyone else is interested in speaking on this bill.
Hello. You tired of me yet? Good evening, Chairman Fink and members of Anarundel County Council. I am Claire Lauter. I'm the president and CEO of the West Anarundel County Chamber of Commerce, and I have spent much of my last year in working revisions of this master plan. The, I do have many members of the Odenton Now Coalition with me today. If I could ask them just briefly to stand so you can see who's here, if they're listening to me. There. There are many others who've been involved in this process that we're not able to attend. The draft Odenton master plan that has been submitted and the drafted amendments are the result of unprecedented cooperation between the administration, the Office of Planning and Zoning, Councilman Pruski's office, and the community. The development community through the west county chambers Odenton Now Coalition spent countless hours reviewing the 2009 master plan page by page to identify and address problems they had encountered in attempting to bring the plan's vision to fruition. Most of those changes are reflected in the document presented, and those that were not have been addressed in Councilman Pruski's drafted amendments. While this should not detract from our overall support of the revised master plan, we continue to be concerned about the inclusion of non-historic commercial buildings along Maryland 170 in the plan's designated historic district. These include a brand-new Walgreens, a 7-Eleven, Odenton Ace Hardware, Expressway Pit Beef, and the already-mentioned Eastern Mechanical, Eastern Excavating. We have several times provided language excluding these businesses from the additional architectural design standards in the historic district, and we too have been ignored. This position was recently reinforced by confirmation that these businesses are not included in the boundaries of the state's eligible historic district. You have, of course, as I said, heard from Eastern Excavating. Both Governor Hogan and County Executive Chu have focused their administrations on making our state and county business-friendly. This does the exact opposite. With that caveat, and the Chu administration has, through Chairman Fink, introduced an amendment that would solve that, we urge your speedy adoption of the 2016 Odenton Town Center master plan and the block of amendments which will be introduced tonight, including the administrations. We believe that this revised master plan will finally allow Odenton to move forward after decades of delay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Lauter, you're, I would consider you the resident expert on the Odenton Town Center. At least that's, you've shared more information with it, about it with me than anyone else, I think, over the past five years on the council. The, it sounds like the part of the problem that you, that is going to be addressed by the amendment that we're getting ready to entertain. But some of the concerns that were expressed earlier, I was wondering if you could maybe address those from your perspective, just to kind of give the other side. I don't, again, I don't know that project as well as you do. It's, and I recognize Mr. Pruski's area, but I am interested in your take.
So my take is that there are properties directly along the rail that are not currently developed. There's one undeveloped parcel that has a plan, and then there's the parking lot. And both those, because they're right near the train station, are very important in transit-oriented development and in getting people close to the station so they can walk there. Those are, as I understand, that the reasons that those are allowed, more development ability than the Block Ten. Block Ten is, in fact, a more residential district. In 2009, a change was made to the plan that reversed that. It's very important that we given the chance to go back to that. It is my opinion, but not the focus of the chamber, that the historic guidelines that are being introduced are in overreach. But I-
Being introduced by?
Were in, are in the master plan, Chapter Nine or Section Nine of Chapter Four.
There's too much protection.
There's, I think there's more, I think, as Sally said, the focus has gone rather on a district that has a feel about it to preserving individual structures, and that was never really the intention. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Keel.
Thank you. My name is Aaron Keel. I've been working with the west county chamber on the Odenton master plan review. I just wanted to take a moment to say, you know, I support the master plan and the adoption of the plan and the amendments that are proposed today. As a private sector planner, nationally certified, I understand the issues of master plan development and zoning and transit-oriented development. And the county's done a very good job putting the plan together. And they did a good job implementing the comments of the west county chamber of commerce on the master plan and the revisions. As you've been hearing, there are still some problems with the master plan. I view some of those as, you know, details which can be worked out with planning and zoning. An example of was, since the revision was released, they re-revised the plan to correct some problems with signage sizes so that now you can now have appropriately sized signs within the town center. But they didn't fix the fonts, so the signs have text that's too small to read under the current thing. But that's a detail that can be worked out with, you know, later on. The point being is that the master plan is good. It's ready for adoption. I think these details can be worked out with planning and zoning, and the document should be viewed as a guidance document. And we should be able to adjust it as we go forward in terms of, you know, guidance, not a Bible. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
All right. Public hearing on this bill is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2016.
And ordinance concerning the Odenton Growth Management Area Plan Review.
All right. We do have 23 amendments that we are going to take as a block. May have a motion-
Wait, wait a minute.
Yes, I'm going to move forward as a block.
Okay.
May have a motion to vote on amendments one through 23 as a block.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trump, Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to take amendments one through 23 as a block is passed.
All right. We'll start with amendment number one. Please read the title of amendment number one.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I'd like to be on the record as co-sponsor in all the amendments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Amendment number one. This amendment clarifies contributing property, do you want me to read all of the amendments and then they'll address them?
Yep.
Okay. This amendment clarifies contributing properties may be located outside the historic subarea. Amendment two, this amendment adds certain key features to the public common concept. Amendment three, this amendment clarifies a town center shuttle should be included in future transit if funds are available and adds Maryland City and Arundel Mills Mall to the proposed connector service. Amendment number four, this amendment includes language regarding new incentives for historic preservation. Amendment number five, this amendment adds language to the general site selection criteria for parking structures. Amendment number six, this amendment adds a determination of the feasibility of soliciting an independent firm to analyze the market challenges and potential in the Odenton Town Center under future actions. Amendment number seven, this amendment corrects the footnote designations for Figure 3.4 and adds self-storage facilities as a permitted use in regulatory blocks five, six, and seven in the core subarea. Amendment number eight, this amendment aligns the glossary definition of monument signs with the signage section of the plan. Amendment number nine, this amendment will allow the county to assist the Odenton Heritage Society as they seek national register historic status. Amendment number 10, this amendment clarifies parking standards for commercial development. Amendment number 11, this amendment will instruct the design study to assess the narrow grid and local streets as possible, one-way streets in order to improve traffic flow. Amendment number 12, this amendment brings the definition of awning signs in the glossary into alignment with the definition in the signage section of the plan. Amendment number 13, this amendment requires that the amount of activity space be proportional to the amount of floor area created. Amendment number 14, this amendment clarifies that the development requirements by block and permitted uses apply with the historic subarea. Amendment number 15, this amendment adjusts the right-of-way width of Odenton Avenue. Amendment number 16, this amendment requires that any developer bonuses awarded will be reported in the annual report. Amendment number 17, this amendment will insert a legend into Figure 3.1, which will aid in the identification of regulatory blocks and carries the new legend over to corresponding Figure 3.3. Amendment number 18, this amendment removes the east parking lot as a potential location for the TOD parking garage. Amendment number 19, this amendment identifies the Independence Park and the Seven Oaks Shopping Center by their commonly known names. Amendment number 20, this amendment more clearly illustrates the proposed hiker-biker paths. Amendment number 21, this amendment removes parcel 582 from the historic subarea Block Nine and places it in east Odenton subarea in Figure 3.2 and adjusts Figures 1.3 and 2.3 accordingly. Amendment number 22, this amendment allows for the exact location of proposed Road 4, P4, to be determined at a future date. Amendment number 23, this amendment provides an exemption from the historic preservation requirements and design standards for certain commercially developed properties.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Pruski, it's your show.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take the motion to adopt.
Much enough.
Move to adopt them.
Second.
Second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
No.
Motion to adopt.
No, it's all, that's fine. They just started discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make first a general statement and certainly go through a couple of things that I think are critical by the testimony and some of the emails that you've gotten. First of all, the Odenton Town Center was a vision and planned in the 1970s. This area has changed dramatically over the year. The Odenton Mark Station is now the third busiest station outside of Union Station and Washington DC and Baltimore. The Odenton Growth Management Plan, aka Odenton Master Plan, was created to manage economic growth in an area that was simply a working-class community, which was mentioned earlier, the National Plastic Factory, a train stop between Washington DC and Baltimore, and a bedroom community. While some of the characteristics of the area have remained the same, Fort Meade and NSA, a few miles down the road from the heart of Odenton, have become the largest employer in the state of Maryland. Garrison Commander Colonel Brian Foley spoke to this council recently at a work session about the importance of Fort Meade as a military asset and an economic engine for our community. The 2016 Odenton Growth Management Plan revision began with the administration, the Planning and Zoning Office, the Planning Advisory Board, and its 174 pages, which is why you have amendments and a lot of discussion, is intended to provide guidelines for the Odenton Town Center. Prior to me speaking about the amendments, I first want to introduce a letter on the record to the council from Bob Hannan, President and CEO of Anarundel Economic Development Corporation, and Dell Adams, Director of Real Estate from the Maryland Department of Transportation, that clearly directs that the east lot at the Odenton Mark Station will not support a parking garage. Again, for the record, if anybody has not seen it, this is signed by Dell Adams from the state and also the Anarundel Economic Development Corporation. I think it's important just to read. There are no current or contemplated plans for the TOD project that includes commuter parking garage on the county-owned east lot, the Odenton Mark Station, which the folks testified here today. We recognize that the development on the east lot, particularly the development of a parking garage, would result in increased vehicular traffic to the adjacent residential area, and such development would be undesirable to the neighborhood. Thank you. This is significant, obviously, because as you saw by the testimony today, that even though we have a letter of agreement as a part of the TOD, both the state and the county recognize that a garage will not work on this site. The amendments that I brought forward tonight provide clarifications. I've met with property owners, the Heritage Society, county government, and all stakeholders. My plan from the get-go has been smart growth, obviously pedestrian access, pushing for a parking garage, not on, certainly on the east lot but other areas, transit-oriented development. And I just want to thank the county staff, certainly Amy Tate, Joanne, Dave Helmicki, and the rest of the folks, especially the Planning Advisory Board and others, who put this together. And specifically, in terms of the amendment, I'm not going to read through every one, but you clearly heard tonight, there are two to three sides on every issue. I compromised. I found a way that, you listen to the Historical Society about not allowing, obviously, the east lot to move forward. In addition, you have some of the pieces and concerns that were brought up by the business community, and I think the amendments that I've brought forward recognize all those things. And I just want to clarify that any person that contacted my office, either had a phone call or a personal one-on-one visit in regards to this plan, and I believe we've done our due diligence and the county could certainly speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Marzick?
We're in support of these amendments. We've been working with Mr. Pruski for the last couple of weeks to go through these amendments, and we would ask for your favorable support.
You're supporting all 23?
Correct.
All right. Does anyone on the council want to go through amendment by amendment? We ran them all off. No need to do so. All right. We're going to vote on them as a block. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendments one through 23.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendments one through 23 are adopted.
That's great. This bill, as amended, will be heard on April 18th at our next meeting. Is there any other business to be brought before the council?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
On a favor?
Aye.